I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council? Seeing no one, I will turn it over to our city attorney. We will go into closed session.
Thank you, Ma'am McCracken. We have several closed-session items to discuss this evening. Hopefully, we can take several of them together since they are somewhat related. Most of the items tonight are pursuant to existing litigation. The names of the parties, the case numbers are all set forth specifically on the agenda. Item number two is potential litigation, and that is pursuant to Government Subdivision C of Section 5495-6.9 of the Government Code, and at this time, we do not want to release the names of the parties that may be involved. The same is true with respect to item number nine, again pursuant to Subdivision C of Section 5495-6.9. It would be harmful to the city at this point to name the potential parties. Item number 10 is public employment pursuant to Government Code 5495-7B. And again, I believe with respect to all of the additional items, they are all pursuant to existing cases. Numbers are all set forth on the agenda as well as the parties. To the extent there is any reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately at the commencement of the regular session.
All right, we will now move into closed session. Good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. We've just come out of closed session, and I'll turn to our city attorney for any reportable action.
Thank you, Ma'am McCracken. We did have 11 items on closed session, and there is no reportable action at this time with respect to any of those items.
All right. This time, we'll have our invocation given by Father Mark Lander from the Holy Innocence Catholic Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Victorville Police Lieutenant Lee Lindbault. If you all please stand.
To begin, we call upon the God in whom we trust, first by giving thanks for our nation, for our city, for the many who serve here and abroad. The Lord will give them His protection and guidance. We pray for us who gather here to give us a spirit of wisdom and humility, a spirit of courage and grace. The Lord will bless those who meet together to serve. We ask God to give us the service, the spirit and mind of those who serve, as we hear in Psalm 131. "O Lord, my heart is not proud, nor haughty my eyes; I have not gone after things too great, nor marvels beyond me. Truly, I have set my soul in silence and peace, as a child has rest in her mother's arms. Even so, my soul, hope in the Lord, both now and forever." Amen.
... allegiance to the banner of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. At this time, we have the honor of having our own San Bernardino County Sheriff, Rod Hoops. With him today is also Under Sheriff Bill Abernathy, Assistant Sheriff Glenn Pratt, and Deputy Chief John McMahon, who will introduce our new Chief of Police, Don Yoder. So, that, Sheriff Hoops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and to the community and the City of Victorville. It gives me a great honor to come before the council today and to the citizens of the City of Victorville to introduce to you the new captain, who's going to be your police chief for the City of Victorville. A lot of thought went into the selection of the police chief for the City of Victorville. As you all know, this is our second-largest contract city, and I believe the first city in the entire county that contracted with our law enforcement services back in the '60s. So, it wasn't just an easy decision on who your new captain was going to be. We conferred with a lot of folks, and as well as Deputy Chief John McMahon, who is here today, and as well as Assistant Sheriff Glenn Pratt, who have a rich tradition and a lot of history here in the City of Victorville, and this promotion actually was made with their blessing as well. The new captain that's going to be promoted and assigned to the City of Victorville effective June 18th is Captain Don Yoder. He is a 26-year veteran of the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. He started in 1985, worked his way up through the Corrections Bureau. He was a patrol officer at the West End Station in the Chino Hills area in 1987. In 1991, he was promoted to detective and served on the Narcotics Bureau. He was promoted to sergeant in 1997 and served the communities of Chino Hills, Rancho Camanga, and our Narcotics Division. In 2005, he was promoted to lieutenant and was assigned as the executive officer of the West Valley Detention Center, and most importantly, to prepare him for this current assignment, he served as the executive officer for the City of Rancho Camanga for two years, where he learned what contract law enforcement is all about. He recently was a lieutenant in our Employee Services Division, which was responsible for all of the hiring and personnel and promotional moves within the Sheriff's Department, and he had a very short stint, about all of a month, in our SED Division. He's a very well-educated individual. He has a Bachelor of Science degree from Southern Illinois University. He's been accepted and is working on his Master's Degree at that same school. He's attending the post-certified Command College Program, which is an exclusive program for executive folks in the state of California that prepares them for command leadership. He's been married to his wife Sunny for 31 years. He has two daughters, aged 28 and 23. He's been very actively involved in the community of Rancho Camanga where he resides, and we fully anticipate that he's going to be as active in the City of Victorville in all the events and the community function that you have up here, as he has been his whole time living in Rancho. Again, our expectations of soon-to-be Captain Yoder are very high, and I give you my word as the elected sheriff of San Bernardino County that this was a decision that we put a lot of work into, and we have never, I believe, assigned a captain to the City of Victorville that the city has not been happy with. Cliff Reynolds, as you know, recently retired, and he was an outstanding captain, and I believe Don Yoder will be one of the finest captains that this city has ever seen in its history. So, with that, if you have any questions of me, you can ask them now, and then I'd like to introduce Don Yoder down to the podium, just to make a couple comments. Any questions at all about Yoder, or Mr. Yoder?
Just to reiterate one of your comments that you made, that you and your predecessors have never failed us and given us a first-class, top-notch sheriff for our city, so I'd write down to the last one. So, I just wanted to let you know that.
Hey, well, I think we're going to have a good track record on Mr. Yoder as well. Any other questions from the council? Hey, Don, would you like to come down and say, oh, there you are.
(laughing) Don Yoder.
Thank you, Sheriff. Again, I just want to reiterate what the sheriff says. I have a lot of experience that I'm going to bring to the city. I appreciate the mayor, the members of the council, the city manager for giving me this opportunity to be here, and I will do the, you proud, and the citizens of Victorville proud.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. This time, we're going to have a special presentation of certificates from the Conservation Division to winners of the May Water Awareness Month Poster Contest for K-6 schools. So, I'll have you come up, and I'll join you down there.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel, the Victorville Water District, in partnership with the City of Victorville, promoted Water Conservation and Water Awareness Month by conducting a water conservation poster contest for children grades kindergarten through six, attending schools in Victorville Water District Service Area. The contest encourages water awareness while students learn about the value of our most precious natural resource. Poster contest announcements were distributed to all the schools in the Victor Valley Water District, sorry, Victorville Water District Service Area. This year, we received 47 entries, first grade through sixth grade, representing 14 schools. A panel of judges comprised of 28 water district and city staff selected the winning posters. The winning poster from each grade level will be developed into refrigerator magnets to be distributed throughout the city. The magnets will remind the community of the importance of water conservation and will be used for many years to come. All participants, as well as the winners, will receive certificates of participation. Additionally, the winning artists from each grade will receive framed, a framed print of their artwork, and a $25 gift card. At this time, I turn it over to...
All right. From the first grade, we had four entries, and the winning entry was provided by Michaela Elwood from Victor Valley Christian School. Michaela? Michaela, she corrected me, so...
(inaudible)
If you'll stay up here, Michaela. From second grade, oh, yes, the certificate.
And the gift card.
And the gift card. That's the most important part. (laughing) From the second grade, we had three entries, and from Lumina School, Hovaka Fiva, and I apologize, I'm not sure if I got that name right. Hovaka Fiva? All right. From the third grade, we had 12 entries, and from Brentwood School, Jordan Zamora. Jordan? From the fourth grade, we have seven entries, and from West Palms Conservatory, Chloe Espinoza. Chloe? From the fifth grade, we had four entries, and from Eagle Ranch School, Jenna Allen. Jenna? And from the sixth grade, we had 17 entries. Wow. From Morgan Kincaid Preparatory School, Alexis Nunean. Alexis? All right. Thank you all, and congratulations to you all. Thank you. All right. At this time, if I could have the city clerk present the agenda to the council?
Thank you, Mayor McCracken. The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the mayor. Individual comments to council members, staff, or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. Following are the revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. The staff has requested that Consent Calendar Item Number 30H Notice of Completion for Eastside Electrical be removed from the agenda. There is a request on the dais from the Building Industries Association to continue for a 45-day period consideration of water connection fees. The staff is requesting that Items Number 21 under the Victorville Water District, 22 under the Victorville Water District Agenda, and Item 26 on the City Council Agenda all be continued to the June 21st City Council Meeting. Those are all the revisions I have.
Charlie, could you repeat those on the Water District agenda?
Water District is Item 21 and Item 22.
Both A and B?
Yes.
Okay. With that, we'll move into the public comment portion of this. I have probably 20-plus cards of public comment, and I have three minutes apiece. That'll keep us here for quite some time. If you can, if you can limit your comments to less than three minutes, I would greatly appreciate it. Secondly, I'd ask that you address all your comments to me as the mayor. I have received tremendous amount of criticism because of the last meeting, and if you want to take anything out on anybody up here, I'm the person to do it to, regardless of who you're addressing that sits up here on this dais. So, I guess I'm in the line of fire, but please take your comment, or address your comments, and address them specifically to me. With that, we'll move into public comment, and Al Cotilla. Al? (laughing) I'm sorry, I'm speaking into the microphone, so I apologize.
Well, first of all, I come here, I want to thank Angela Valier for turning in somebody who's got something going, and I'm not going to name any names. You guys know what it is. I don't know whether they're guilty or innocent, but they deserve to go to trial. If it happened to me, I'd be locked up in jail, and I'd have to get a bail and all that. But it's not happening here. But anyway, very much, and all the people I talked to, thank you very much. Now, they got this new apartment building they built over at my place that we all hate. And they said, oh, and I talked to them, they said, oh, we're going to check the parents out really well to make sure they're, you know, not lowlifes or Section 8s, and they have good, steady jobs. That's okay, but what they should do, and what you should do in the whole city, is check the kids out for criminal records, and if they got criminal records, throw them the hell out of town. Don't let them move in. That's more important than the people's having good money. We need more cops in this town. There's people being robbed in broad daylight, right on the street. It happened in my neighborhood. And another thing I just don't understand, why would you want to hire back that audit company you had when they didn't find any mistakes that the city council made? To me, that sounds a little fishy, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything. Everything I say up here is my own opinion. But when you, why don't you hire back the companies that found all the mistakes that the city council made? The last city council, there's one right there, and there's one right there. And they made a lot of mistakes, and they spent money on things they shouldn't have spent. They got grants from the government, and they go build a clubhouse on the golf course, which they shouldn't have done. One kid get mugged on Pebble Beach in the, right in the daytime. They took his coat, and they took his radio, and all that stupid electronic stuff they got now. And then my neighbor picked him up and gave him a ride home. He wanted to take him to the police. He said, I'm too afraid they had guns. We need more cops. You shouldn't spend another penny on anything in this city until we have 10 or 12 more cops. We don't want tired cops coming to our house when they have to make quick decisions. And I don't think you would want them coming to your house either. You got to pay them time and a half anyway. So, put that towards getting new cops, and you don't have to pay them time and a half. But, I mean, it's ridiculous, the crime that's going on in this city. The country shot the hell, so, you know, that don't mean our city has to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Dane Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. My comments tonight are related to the proposed closing of several recreational venues in the city, Pebble Beach, racquetball courts, and then in my neck of the woods, West Winds Activity Center and West Winds Sports Center. As many of you up in the city council know, I've pastored the first Christian church there on airbase for the past 12 years, back in 94, when the church purchased that facility directly from the Air Force. The city council was ecstatic, very pleased, that an outside organization was moving on to the decommissioned airbase. But I must say, in the past 15-plus years since we've moved in, it's been quite challenging with some of the decisions made by the Airport Authority, and Sterling in particular. I want you to put yourself in my shoes as a pastor, pastoring a church that started out lush and beautiful in a nice neighborhood, and over the last 16-plus years, has turned into a ghost town. And I didn't stand before you and voice any concerns when the great pyramids of cement rubble were erected along George Boulevard, and the sprinklers were turned off on the grass, and the trees were falling down, and all the housing was vandalized. But we're now at a position where someone has to literally drive a half a mile through a ghost town to get to our facility. Makes it hard to do ministry. I have two primary concerns related to the closing of the West Winds Sports Center right next to us. Concern number one is vandalism. Just about nine or 10 months ago, our AC unit was vandalized, and about $2,800 later was repaired. And as you know, vandals go specifically onto the airbase to steal copper, and as of last year, I'm told that the security patrol no longer even considers the recreational side of the airport, part of the airport, any longer. And so, you close down a couple gyms there. I can guarantee you, that's going to increase. I'm at that facility five to seven days every week, something I don't think anyone else in this room can say. I'm in the middle of that section where these two gyms are proposed to be closed down, and I'm very concerned about vandalism. Secondly, my greater concern is all the young men coming into that gym, expending some of that productive energy in a productive manner, and no longer having that opportunity to be kicked out the door, and no longer have a gymnasium to go to. That's a grave concern for me. Does no good to my church, and it does no good, I think, for the City of Victorville. And so, I've been in communication with John Gargan. I've been in communication with one of the representatives of the Racquetball Association, and we're working together to try to come up with a way to make this cost-neutral for the city. I realize you're losing about $73,000 a year with that facility in particular, the West Winds Sports Center. And what I'm asking the city council tonight is to consider giving us an extension beyond that proposed July 1st closing of the West Winds Sports Center in particular. And if you give us a little bit of time, I guarantee you, we'll get our heads together. We'll come up with a plan to make this as cost-neutral as possible. I want to work together with you, Mayor, and with the city to be able to keep this recreational facility open. Not necessarily all three, but certainly the West Winds Sports Center, and I think that'll meet most of the needs that our community has. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Allman? Joanne?
Good evening. I never thought I'd be standing here, doing what I'm going to do or say what I'm going to say. I'm going to be speaking to Ryan, but I didn't know there was a new rule, because when I sat up there when they destroyed me, they looked right at me, which was fine. First of all, there's a folder being handed out. It's from a website that we have. It's called savectorville.org. It'd be great if you guys, there's just a few things out of there. First of all, I would like to remind everybody that don't know, this building is the people's house, not a place to promote your political future. You work for the people. Jim, I really like your agenda item tonight. Angela, your support, you're supposed to work as a team, not a dictator. I'm looking at you, Ryan. I hope I'm keeping the rules. You need to stop micromanaging each and every department. We would like to know just one positive thing that she has done. All this negative stories and controversy is hurting all of us. There's businesses that are not coming here after they talk, excuse me, to the chamber, and they read our papers. We know of three businesses that are gone. This is hurting new home sales, industries, and new businesses. If we just get, she just wants to get her name and her picture in the paper, which is crazy, and it's hurting because she has a very big ego. The things she ran on, like the red light cameras and the sheriffs, all these things, as some of you know, were taken care of before she was even sworn in. Rudy, I'm so sorry for what's going on with you and Vicki. You both have been here for so long and have done so many things wonderful for this city, like the military banners and had fire chief for many, many years. The only reason this all happened to you two was because the last article and the last paragraph said why. You and Vicki did something to upset her, so she had to get a U.S. Now, it is Ryan. He don't second her votes, and I don't see why you should. You're up here to agree to disagree on a lot of things. The puppet, her puppet master Tate will tell her who to go after next. You are so full of yourself, people think you are telling the truth and being abused by this council and staff. That's so, so wrong. Mayor was not yours. That's up to the council members. I hope and pray you are never mayor.
John, that's, that's the time.
Done?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I've said enough. The rest I'll say next time. Thank you. Thank you.
Norm Miller?
Uh, no, I'm not gonna allow that during public comment. Would you like to speak, Norm? Okay.
Dorothy Miller?
Dorothy Miller, and I guess you all know what's going on here, and it's absolutely ridiculous. Number one, we start out with an attorney. We don't need him. We don't want the city manager. We don't need a council member. We don't need this, we don't need that. We do need them. We need to stop what is going on. We need to work together. And I've told you before, when you were running for city council, it takes five votes to pass anything, or at least three out of the five. And we just keep going on and on and on, and we're going against everybody. Next is gonna be Ryan. We've gone against all the rest of them, the recall, this, that, and everything else. It just keeps going on and on and on. This council needs to get together and work together, and not be micromanaging, making these employees sit back here and wonder if they're gonna have a job tomorrow, because we don't get our paperwork in time. We don't get this, we don't get that. It's been proven, you get what they give you on time. And this is absolutely ridiculous. Now, you guys have got to get together and get things going in the right direction, and somebody sitting up there better stop, because there's two of you sitting there that I know was paid for to get on here from a developer. And I don't think that is right at all. I feel people that run for office should be qualified to run for office, and you don't need somebody to sit back and pay all this money to get you on there. And then when you get on there, you treat the people like crap. And that is not right. Thank you.
Tom LaForsen? Tom?
I'm working at it. Remember, I have a hard last name, too.
How you doing tonight? Well, I've, I've done a little homework for you guys, and I've talked to a bankruptcy lawyer. He's very good. He's been up here in the Victor Valley for probably thirty years. He knows all the ins and outs and ups and downs and problems that's going on with Victorville. We had a good long talk about it an hour. He said, the only thing he can see is to file bankruptcy. Now, I don't know if you, anybody around here realizes or not, but Orange County filed bankruptcy quite a few years ago, and he read all the paperwork that was done on that. It was finally taken over by an administrator. They finally had to put somebody in there to take care of all the business because the way the city was run. And I, I hate to say it, but he said, he don't see any way out of it. You can talk about, you know, doing, uh, an audit where it shows you got a lot of money and everything else, but, but you don't have it. You don't have it. You never will, no matter what you sell, you can't get out from underneath it. It's that simple. And as far as this, uh, where there's, uh, a lot of miscommunications with the council members, some members aren't being given the information as to what's coming up at the next meeting, so they have no idea how to vote. Common sense is very simple. Whoever puts all the stuff together, have it typed up, which you all do, and make sure the copy in everybody's mailbox by Friday before the meeting. That way, everybody has a chance to read it, study it, search it on the computer, whatever, be ready for a vote on Tuesday. That way, there's no lopsided votes and nobody being left out. Thank you.
Thank you. Al Vogler?
Good evening, Victorville council members. I'm Al Vogler. The Daily Press today, June seventh, twenty-eleven, ran an article titled, "Council Members May Need Approval to Request Information." I'm reasonably sure that there are reasons why the council is exploring the issue that I'm unaware of. I also feel comfortable suggesting that there are political motivations behind such a procedure, which would require any council member to go before the city council to obtain approval for an information request. Victorville has a variety of serious issues which need to be resolved. An unknown number of Victorville voters want transparency and clarity in city government. To suggest that a city council member needs approval, or worse, should file a public records request, is ludicrous. Council members are elected by the voters and as such are given a mandate to deal with city information to ensure clarity and honesty. To prevent the free flow of information will be perceived by the public as an attempt to silence a council member and perhaps create conflicts of interest. When the council stated that they felt transparency was very important, I now wonder about the sincerity of the statement. What's next? I suppose that the Victorville City Council could vote to pass an item requiring city council members to first obtain council approval to have matters placed on the agenda. Has there been any such thought or discussion? The Constitution First Amendment reads, "Congress shall make no law," and closes with, "abridging the freedom of speech." Victorville would probably not intend to abridge free speech, but the action that you are considering would have the public perception of your doing so. Please do not restrict or propagandize the necessity of any council member to request information without first having the approval of a city council, which may have political motivations to block such an information request. Although I am not a Victorville resident, I possess very strong feelings about limiting free speech and the chilling effect it would have on other Victor Valley communities. We live in communities and in a county where the public has quite clearly voiced an opinion regarding the need for open and honest government. Of more importance, I believe you should be discussing a solution to provide rapid and accurate information answers to your council members, instead of discussing how you were going to hamper or limit the requests. Thank you so much for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Uh, Richard Clear? Chow, sorry, I could not read the last name.
A while ago, a number of people came in and yelled at you about the red light cameras. So, so I'm not gonna do that. But, um, came across some information that if you are interested in, uh, in challenging the contract that you're involved in, that, uh, you may wanna consider. Um, Redflex is, um, currently, uh, in litigation with, um, American Traffic Solutions. And, uh, one of the issues that they're covering is, um, the sensors, the radar sensors on the, uh, red light cameras, uh, were never approved by the FCC. Now, if their red light sensors were never approved, possibly the same equipment, uh, that they, uh, basically sold to, um, Victorville, uh, also was not approved. And if the equipment itself is not approved, then the contract is subject to not being approved. Because I'm sure that you guys, uh, never would've made a contract on equipment that wasn't approved. Did you check it? You, Mr. McCacken, did you check it? Have you checked it in the past? It might be something that you might wanna check. The, uh, National Motorist Association has, um, a ten thousand dollar, uh, ticket camera challenge that, um, if you would, uh, uh, address the traffic issues with, um, engineering solutions and, uh, remove, uh, the cameras, uh, they'll, uh, come up with ten thousand dollars. And if you'd like, I can give you a copy of, uh, of their offer. Uh, maybe something else that you might wanna consider. Of course, you all know that, um, over the entire country, um, the cameras don't seem to be working. The cameras seem to be creating, uh, more accidents, more rear-end accidents than, uh, than they seem to be solving. Hopefully, it won't be too long while those cameras are down, but, um, you gotta decide which side that you wanna get on. Angela has, uh, come out, uh, in favor of removing the cameras, and I believe that you Um, the rest of the members need to decide which side they're gonna be on. Those cameras will not survive.
Thank you, Mr. Chow.
Thank you.
Larry Hoover?
Yes, good evening, council people. Uh, red light cameras, just my subject tonight. I got my motorcycle insurance today, and last November, I got a ticket. I didn't know nothing about it, but when I got the ticket, I was in my Suburban with my Green Bay Packer coat on, so I guess I run a red light. I paid the ticket, which was too high. I decided not to go to traffic school, since I have not had a ticket in twenty-five years. One point should not hurt my driving record, so I thought. Well, was I wrong? My sports car insurance went up three hundred dollars. My small boat went up sixty dollars. I just got my motorcycle insurance today, went up two hundred dollars. I've been fighting with insurance companies all day. I haven't paid my motorhome yet, or my Jeep insurance. What is wrong with this scenario? Go to traffic school. I was too smart. I didn't have to go, 'cause I didn't need to go to traffic school. One point's not gonna hurt me. One point really does hurt. In fact, I'm sending a copy to the letter editor. People have to go to traffic school. With the ticket, I will pay over a thousand dollars this year and seven hundred dollars the next two years. Isn't this way out of line? Thank you.
Reverend Raphael Porras?
Evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Raphael Porras, and working real close with Pastor Dane to see we can get leadership from, from the city, to see we can keep the park open. You know, we have to find out the way. See, we have to look for donation, we look for donation. See, we have to look for volunteering, we have to look for volunteering, but we have to keep those parts open. Can see, can I see leadership from this council, to we can work together and keep those parts open. Uh, another subject is the red light. Last time you gave the second to Mr. Angela Vias, to give a sixty-day to the Tea Party. What happened? We wanna know what happened. We wanna work together with you guys. You know, it's supposed to be attorney for the Tea Party work with the city attorney, and nothing happened. You give a sixty-day, time passed, we wanna see that ball ready to go to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Nelson?
Bob Nelson? I came down here to speak on item thirty-six, but after looking at your-
I'm closer to your mouth, sir.
I came down here to speak on item thirty-six, but after looking at your meeting rules and listening to you, I have a copy of a, my little ephemeral press, I gave a copy to the board of supervisors today, I'm gonna give a copy to the clerk. I hope each one of you look at it. There's an article here called, "Gavel Authority in the Pubbing Meeting Process." You folks are so far away from what the First Amendment wants and what the Brown Act wants, that it's just unbelievable. And you know why they call this the Wild West of ethics? Because of meeting rules like you have right here. I think you need to take a good look at them. You actually have four authorities, and I can go through them. Please, read this article. "Gavel Authority in the Pubbing Meeting Process." It'll tell you what you really need to know. And I would like to congratulate you on finally having a thumb. You know, uh, the hand doesn't work too good without a thumb. You need an opposition. You folks haven't had an opposition on this council for a long time, so congratulations, man.
Richard Castro?
Mr. Mayor, council? Um, I'm not gonna attack nobody. Uh, I would just like to suggest maybe perhaps that, uh, the format for the council agenda that is posted on the city's website, if we make it a little more user-friendly, um, get a scroll-through pages and pages of this page left blank on purpose, that page left blank on purpose, and by the time you've found what you wanted, you've scrolled through three hundred pages. Maybe we can, um, put a face page on there with just nothing but what you're gonna talk about, okay? And, uh, that's all I wanted to say, just a suggestion.
Thank you. Uh, Eddie Fonseca Senior?
But, uh, I'm coming on behalf of the closing of the racketball courts and the basketball courts. Um, I'm a young grandparent, and, uh, my family, we utilize that, uh, facility, and I just wanted to echo what, uh, the pastor said as far as, you know, having young people a place and outlet to go and, you know, utilize their, be able to use themselves in a more positive, uh, way. And so, uh, I just, if there's any way that, uh, maybe bringing up, it costs two bucks to play, you know? I'm not opposed to having the, uh, amount go up, you know? What's a dollar? Even for me, it's two dollars. I, it's, uh, you know, but I'd like to find a way that we can work way to make things work out, so the, the facilities do not get closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Geller. I'm with the San Bernardino County Fairgrounds, and I'll be really quick. Um, we've been partnering with Victorville Park and Rec for the Fourth of July, Fourth of July event for many years. Um, each year, we work together to create the best family event possible for the community, a day where families can gather together and enjoy music and performances and fireworks, rides, contests, and safe environment. Unfortunately, due to the current economic conditions, it is becoming more and more difficult to cover the cost of these different areas of the event, um, with all the budget cuts between our facility and with the park and rec, and we're doing the best we can with the funds we have. Unfortunately, this year, we're gonna have a shortfall of about four thousand dollars. We have, um, proposed to have a two-dollar per car parking fee on the Fourth of July event to address that shortcoming, um, and we haven't been able to get that approved. So, what we're doing now is we're looking for alternative funding. We're trying to raise the funds. So, we've been appealing to all of our different boards and our board of directors on the fairgrounds and local businesses, and trying to raise the donations to cover those funds for our Fourth of July event. And, and that's why I'm here tonight, to appeal to all you folks, to see if you can tap your resources to help us with those donations. Any donations, um, can be made directly to the Bears, and then they will send a check to the fairgrounds to cover the cost.
Okay. Well, on behalf of myself, I'd be more than willing to commit two hundred and fifty dollars to your cause and, so that you don't have to charge for parking.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
This is being web-streamed, right? Or, whatever they call it? The whole community out there is following this?
Webcast.
I know my wife and I will do the same, so I hope everybody out here is paying attention. Doesn't have to be two hundred and fifty bucks, but do what you can.
Yo, anything you can donate is much appreciated. Thank you very much, both of you.
Susan Wells?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I'm here today to speak for those who can't speak for theirselves, the children of Victorville. We are very upset about the proposed closing of Pebble Beach Park and the closure of the swimming pool after this year. This is the only public pool that these children have, and we're wondering what they're going to do after the closure. Where are they going to go? It is unconscionable that you are even thinking about closing this pool. I'm also speaking for the racquetball players, the tennis players, and the swimmers. I'm a lap swimmer. I'm a racquetball player. I've been playing racquetball at that park for over 20 years. In a time when we have childhood obesity rampant, to think about closing these things is ridiculous. I have a prepared paper that I'd like to read to you. In a time when our country is going through one of the worst recessions that it has seen in a time when cutbacks, staff reduction, furlough days, pay cuts, and elimination of programs is the norm, there is a little valley in California called Victor Valley where the people say enough. Yes, we have had enough. We want our town back. We do not want the only public pool closed next year so the children have no option for low-cost water activities. We offer to Mr. Gargan alternative solutions to this dilemma. We offer you ideas for cost reduction. We offer you ideas to partner with the high school to bring more teenagers back to the park. We offer you our most valuable resource, our time as volunteers to keep the racquetball and tennis courts running. Volunteerism is not dead in America. We just needed a wake-up call. We have heard that call, and we're awake from our slumber now, and we're ready to roll up our sleeves to do what we can to keep these parks open. We extend our hand in friendship and cooperation with the council to work as a team to come to a solution which will benefit all concerned, all cohorts, to solve this problem. Do not be another city of slash-and-burn techniques to our park programs. Be a council who is ready to work with its citizens and form a partnership with us. Be forward-looking and not backwards. We want the same thing as you. We want the preservations of these much-needed parks and recreation for our citizens. And there's a lot of people that I'm speaking for today who's not standing up here talking, but I would really like you to reconsider before you close the swimming pool, tennis courts, and racquetball. Thank you.
Kayne McGraw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me this opportunity. I'd like to briefly speak with you about Pebble Beach Racquetball Center. We have been, my wife and I have been members there for a little over 20 years now, and we've been playing on a regular basis probably for about the last 10 years. It's an extremely good exercise, especially for older people, providing they don't have a heart attack. But one of the other advantages, excuse me, to having this racquetball court there is after you play for a couple hours, you build up the hunger, and you go to a nearby restaurant, which is in Victorville, and you spend some of your money there. The racquetball court, you know, it services not only Victorville, but it also services Hesperia, Apple Valley, and also Oak Hills. So if there's any way in your budget that you might be able to allow this to stay open, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andrew Maras.
How's it going, Mr. McHeckern? I'm not going to say thank you for allowing me to speak, though, but what you've done by throwing up your cloud of protection against, in front of the rest of the council here is a violation of my free speech and everybody else's that wants to speak freely here to the individual members, Mr. McHeckern. That's wrong. It's wrong, period. I voted for you because you ran on cleaning this city up, and now it looks like you've jumped in bed with these two in this one, and you're just following the long line of BS practices that have gotten this city into, what is it, like 60-something million in debt? Another thing, too, is you should stand up and trade places with her right now because she's the one that's supposed to be the mayor. She got the most votes. It's been like that for years and years, decades and decades, before she got the most votes. And for the three of your buddies here to side up and say you get to be the mayor, that's wrong, too, Mr. McHeckern. I'm, I mean, I don't know how else to say it without, you know, being a jerk about it or whatnot, but it's wrong, Mr. McHeckern. It really is. There was one other thing, too, but I didn't write notes again. I forgot. For the most part, though, we were dependent, the city is dependent on good choices to be made from this council and honesty to be emitted from this council, and we're seeing everything but that. I mean, we want the Bell auditors to come back. Come on, give me a break. It's, that's, that's a jo, I'll look at you when I'm talking, but that's, that's an absolute joke. And if you want to follow the path of the city of Bell, look where their council ended up, you know? And I still think you should get up and change seats with her and give the mayorship to who it rightfully belongs to. There's no voting people out and saying you can't do this because she, maybe she's getting at something or digging at something that is touching a nerve on your guys' don't-touch list or whatever, but if you guys are going to be making decisions that are for the betterment of the city, keep it honest, keep it real. And if there's conflicts, there's conflicts, hey? Keep it, keep it honest. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, so I don't quite have something set here to speak on. But when I heard that woman attacking Ms. Vias, I chose to come up and speak a little bit on what you're doing here. I'm not a big fan of any of you, and I mean all of you, but right now, I'm giving one person the benefit of the doubt, and the people are looking at you to do the right thing and to make the right decisions as you're representing the people. I was reading on your website that Victorville is a charter city, which means that when the city incorporated, city leaders chose to use their, the existing state codes as they relate to laws, functions, and powers of the mayor and city council rather than a charter. So I went to the California Constitution and looked up some codes and also some government codes in regards to being able to access public records. And under the Public Records Act of Government Code 97, 970 through 980, we're able to access the public records from private nonprofit corporations and entities that perform work for any government or county agency. Also, there's a Freedom of Information Act, Chapter 5. It's USC Code 552. Records include all communications related to public business, any writing, pictures, found, or symbol of public interest. Government Code 6250 through 6276.48, the public has all rights to access information and possession of all public agencies for public inspection at all time during normal business hours. The effective agencies are as follows: All local agencies, any officer, bureau, governmental departments, any board, commission, advisory board, committee, and nonprofit entities that are legislative bodies for local agency. This access is for any member of the public to be deemed immediate under Government Code during normal business hours, also under Government Code 520, 5253A. So I'm assuming that you're going to be abiding by the laws and the government codes when we're trying to access our public records, or if one of your members here on the board chooses to access these records. We're not under, only under California Constitution, but the supreme law of the land is the U.S. Constitution, and that provides us with these rights that supersede the California Constitution and any laws. So as Mr. Vogler expressed, we have that right, and we don't have to be a team where everyone's going to agree, but if you agree to be lawful and abide by the Constitution, especially the U.S. Constitution, then we're on the same team. If not, then the people need to stand up and remind the representatives that you do work for us, and it also says here that we have the right to instruct our representatives, petition government for redress of grievances, and assemble freely to consult for the common good. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, those are all the public comment cards I have at this time. So I'd like to move on to our agenda.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things that bothers me about public comments is that we hear a lot from the public, but by the time we get to the agenda to deal with the specific issues that are actually on the agenda and not in the newspaper headlines, the public's gone. So you're not here to hear the full discussion. So for those of you who are angry about things, I ask that you stick around all the way to the end, and let's get to hear the full discussion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We'll move on to the Library of Board of Trustees. Agenda item number 15 is the Consent Calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries unanimously.
There's nothing for Southern California Logistics Rail Authority. Moving on to the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Agenda item number 16 is Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Amendment Number 1 to the Promissory Note dated March 16, 2010.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 17 is Request to Authorize the Execution of the Settlement Agreement Between SCLA/HESEM-PACI-PEGE in the Amount of $15,000.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to the Redevelopment Agency. Agenda item number 18, Request to Approve a Silver Sponsorship for the High Desert Opportunity 2011 Event in the Amount of $10,000.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias, voting no.
Agenda item number 19 is Request to Approve, 1, Amendment Number 1 to the Affordable Housing Agreement, AHA, with AmCal Hillcrest Court Fund LP for the substantial rehabilitation of a multifamily housing community, and 2, authorize the Economic Development Director to execute all related documents to implement said agreement, said amendment.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias, voting no.
There are no items at the time of posting for the Joint Powers Financing Authority, so we'll move on to the Victorville Water District. Agenda item number 20 is Public Hearing Call to Receive Comments on the 2010 Urban Water Management Plan for the Victorville Water District. Do we have a presentation from staff, or am I just opening the public hearing on this?
Mayor members of the council, we didn't plan a full presentation. We have provided copies of the plan. At this point in time, we're just receiving public comment. This item would be brought back to the next city council meeting for approval, addressing those comments.
I have a couple of questions on the urban water management plan. When I was on the Water District Board, we were in a serious overdraft situation, both in the Victorville area and in Baldi Mesa and in the Mojave Water Agency. It appears, and I don't remember the graph, I think it was in Section 6, showing that the per capita daily gallons consumed has dropped from 260 to about 200 in the last five years. That's pretty amazing. How do you account for, Kathy Cochran unfortunately is not here because she's our conservation specialist, but I'd like you to address that a bit.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, and we do have a representative from the consulting engineering company that prepared the study, if I'm unable to satisfactorily address your questions. There would be a combination of reasons for that drop, things like water conservation programs, cash for grass, water-efficient fixtures. Looking at, in the most recent two-to-three-year period, there would be a reduction based upon just the foreclosure situation that we have. And, you know, before too long, the combination of those factors does make a big impact. It is recognized by the great reduction in the amount of water that we pump on an annual basis. I mean, that's the true test of are these programs working? Are we drawing less water? The answer is absolutely. We pump less out of the ground.
My other question was your projections to 2035 involved some pretty substantial population growth. That doesn't seem to be borne out by the last year or two, but do you think that's a realistic
Any planning document has to make certain assumptions based upon historic records, and if we look back a 23-year period, and, you know, and I took a look at this myself when we were looking at traffic modeling, a 3% number is a good, realistic number. If you take that same growth, but you're only projecting forward 10 or 15 years, it does look unrealistic. But it is a planning document. There are issues associated with the conservation combined with growth, and, you know, the result is a plan to try and provide for that water source into the future to accommodate that growth.
Thank you, Sean. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 20. I do not have any cards for this agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council or provide comment on Agenda Item Number All right, seeing no one, would it be appropriate to continue the public hearing?
Correct. Is the request two weeks?
No, on this item, you can go ahead and close the public hearing, and then on the next agenda, there will be an actual resolution to adopt the plan. This was just the opportunity to-
Okay. All right, then I'll close the public hearing, and that was just for us to receive comment. There is no action required. We have received requests from not only the Building Industry Association, but also from staff to continue Agenda Items 21, 22, and 26. Were there dates certain?
The request by staff is June 21st.
June 21st.
But these were public hearings, so the hearing should be open to take any testimony, and then it can be continued.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, considering that we'll be looking to continue these, all three items, 21, 22, and 26. Is anyone wishing to address the council on any of those items? I do have one card from John Muir.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. Well, it sounds like we're going to be continuing this, but my comment is to ask that you look at not increasing the standby rate. I own 100 acres right on- I own 100 acres right down Verbena in Palmdale Road. I don't use any water, and I know there's calculations and costs for standby, but it doesn't look like I'm going to be using water anytime soon with my development. And with the BIA looking at it, I just ask that you really look at restraining any increases as much as you can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, did you wish to speak, or...
Good evening, Mayor McEckern and members of the city council. We appreciate the time and attention that staff of the Water District have given, looking at the proposed connection fees. However, this evening, we are asking for a 45-day continuance specifically on the connection fee items. As we mentioned in our letter that I believe we submitted, and as part of the addendum to tonight's packet, we sent out a letter every year to ask for at least a two-week notification on proposed connection fees or proposed fee changes, and we received that about 10 days ago. So, as you can imagine, it's probably a very technical document, and we're still in the process of looking through that. I spoke with Steve Barrowman earlier this evening, and we went through some of the document, and he mentioned to me that parts of the resolution tonight deal with items other than the connection fees and that are related to items that would be connected to the fiscal year. And I recognize that some of those items are connected to the fiscal year, but the connection fees do not necessarily fall into that category because you could pull a permit at any time of the year. So, what we're asking for is specifically the item that's related to the connection fees. If we could continue that for 45 days so that we have the opportunity to make an accurate assessment of the fees, that would be our request this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council on Agenda Items 21, 22, and 26?
I don't think the council has any real authority to do anything with the Water District because the hostile takeover that you guys did on the Water District a year and a half or two years ago was not chosen by the actual water users. So, I think that your guys' track record that you've proven to mismanage funds of any type would be more than cause for you guys to separate yourself completely from controlling our water and just leave it alone. Give it back to who was running it in the first place, who did a good job of running it, as opposed to the city council having control over it and raping the funds out of it. So, any decision really made by you guys is kind of a joke, really, and would be nice to see you guys give it up and all the other little things that you guys have control over, subbing your guys' powers out to other little things that you guys ain't got no business messing with. You don't have, the city has no reason to be controlling the people's water, period. That's all I got.
All right. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing, or, well, I'd look to continue the public hearing, and I'm going to make the motion that we do continue this to the, I won't go 45 days, but at least the first meeting in July versus the next meeting in June.
July 5th would be the first meeting in July.
July 5th.
That would be my motion.
July 5th.
July 5th.
Mr. Mayor, there are a couple of items within some of these resolutions that we would like to get resolved before the end of the fiscal year. If you would allow staff to pick out those items specifically to be heard on the 21st, it would be appreciated.
I'm fine with that.
And that would be those items where no fee increase is effective at all?
So, that is my motion that we...
Second.
Motion by Mayor McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Member Vias, thank you. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number 23. This is a request to consider waiver of conflict related to Lafco's use of legal counsel, Best Bestin Krieger and environmental consultant Tom Dodson Associates in processing the district's application for activation of latent sewer powers. Mr. Cox?
Mr. Speaker of the Council, we've had several issues before the Local Agency Formation Commission. We have never raised an issue. We don't see a conflict. It has, we had the same general counsel representing Lafco when we considered the northerly expansion, and also the same attorney represented Lafco when we considered the annexations. This here is simple compared to those items. This is merely for the Water District to obtain sewer power. The city already has sewer power, but this would be to activate the latent sewer powers for the Water District. It's a simple matter. There's no problems. We don't see any conflicts at all.
Mayor McEckern, for the record, Councilmember Kennedy recused himself because he does tax work for Tom Dodson. Tom Dodson's basically a client of his, so that's the reason for the refusal.
Andre, do I have a conflict?
I do not believe you have any kind of conflict, no.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Mayor McEckern. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Kathleen, I apologize. I do have a card from you. I think we did what you wanted us to do anyway, but, okay, so, but you wanted to make some comments.
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things for the record. I'm here to answer any questions. Related to my letter on the issues of conflict, and as Mr. Cox indicated, Best Bestin Krieger has served Lafco for more than 20 years, when Mr. also joined that firm, and he's remained our legal counsel. In the past, we have reviewed the question of conflict with staff on the dissolution of the Park District, the Fire District, and the Sanitary District, and there weren't issues. But given the recent discussion of potential conflicts, I felt it appropriate to ask specifically that there was no problem in this case so that it was, we made sure. Also, when we did do the discussion of the consolidation of the two water districts with subsidiary district status for the city, we asked in that instance as well regarding any conflict for Tom Dodson to make sure that there was no discussion or concern on anybody's part for the use of those consultants by the Local Agency Formation Commission. So, I wanted to make that clear, and the issue about cost is that we have a legal counsel deposit fee, and actual costs are charged to every agency who files an application. There was nothing unusual about that request. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy, but thank you.
We'll now move on to the City Council portion of the agenda, and we have several public hearing items. Agenda Item Number 24 is a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against the adoption of Resolution Number 11-015 entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, California Making Determination and Confirming Assessments and Proceedings for Unpaid Transient Occupancy Taxes." At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on Agenda Item Number 24? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and return it to the council for a decision.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 25 is a public hearing regarding Code Amendment PLN 10-00027. This is a request for a continuance to the August 2, 2011 meeting. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 25. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right, seeing no one, I will go ahead and continue Agenda Item Number 25 to the August 2, 2011 meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 27. This is a public hearing called Request a Continuance to the June 21, 2011 meeting for the confirmation of the annual assessments for all of Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts and adoption of Resolution Numbers 11-022 through 11-029. I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 27. Anyone wishing to address the council on Agenda Item Number 27? All right, seeing no one, I will continue the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 27 to June 21, 2011. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 28. Public hearing called to Request a Continuance to the June 21, 2011 meeting for the confirmation of annual assessments for all of the Drainage Facility, Facilities Assessment Districts and adoption of Resolutions Numbers 11-030 through 11-032. Open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 28. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Seeing no one, I will continue Agenda Item Number 28 to June 21, 2011. And Agenda Item Number 29 is Public Hearing Called to Request a Continuance to the June 21, 2011 meeting for confirmation of annual assessments for Maintenance Assessment District Number One and Two and adoption of Resolution Numbers 11-033 and 11-034. Open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 29. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? All right, seeing no one, we will continue that item to June 21, 2011. Our next item is Agenda Item Number 30, the Consent Calendar.
Mayor McEckern, just as a reminder, the staff has requested the removal of one of the consent calendar items, which is H, Notice of Completion.
Andre, I noticed that there's a check in the warrants for BBWRA. Is that a conflict?
Not sure what that, Doug, do you know what that goes to? It may well be in a BIA. It'd be appropriate to probably pull that item out and on the safe side vote separately.
That item would most likely be the user fee. I'll take a look at it real quick, but that'd be my guess.
I would request you pull that item then and deal with that one item approval separately.
So, we're pulling the commercial demand schedule?
Just the one item on that demand schedule. Is that correct? I believe there's one item for the approval of payment to BBWRA, and then vote on that one separately with Ms. Vias recusing herself.
Do I have to leave the room?
Very briefly, yes.
Now?
Want to vote first?
Well, why don't we, why don't we vote on the rest of the consent calendar, and then we'll handle that item? So, we do have a motion and a second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy and second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Mayor Protem Cabrealis, do you have a vote? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Looking at this agenda item, Mr. Mayor, the BBWRA does have a description attached to it at the very end. Says SCLA sewage treatment fees, VSD, an amount of $987,944.76. I believe that's the item, the specific item that Councilmember Vias was concerned about.
All right, could I entertain a motion with respect to that particular item?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabrealis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Okay, we'll now move into Written Communications. Agenda Item Number 31. This is Request to Approve the Attached Amendment Number One to Terminate the Construction Cooperative Agreement between the City of Victorville and the State of California Department of Transportation for the La Mesa Road, Niskualea Road, I-15 Interchange Project. District Agreement Number 8-1478 and authorize the mayor to execute the amendment.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 32 is Request to Approve Amendment Number Two to Renew the Service Agreement with Rod Sorensen Services in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for the fiscal year 2011, 2012, to update the scope of services provided and allow for an option to extend the agreement for one additional six-month period upon subsequent agreement by both
I have a question. Why aren't we going out for bid on these? Why are we extending them? Is there a reason for that?
Sean, you want to answer it? You want me to answer it?
Councilwoman Vias, the services would be for work that's already underway under the current contract. This would be an amendment to the contract and extend the period of time. On page two of the staff report, we've highlighted all of the work tasks within that contract that would be, that Rod Sorensen would be working on, which he is currently working on in this current contract.
So, if you have a contract for a certain amount of time, wouldn't he be required to finish it within that amount of time?
It's a, it's an hourly rate contract to perform work. It is not a performance-based, and I think that's what you're referring to.
How long has he had this contract, total?
I don't, I don't know how long the existing contract has been in place.
Thank you.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 33 is Request to Approve Payment to Duke's Route Control, Inc. for the application of route control product to affected portions of the city's sewer collection system in the amount of $47,450.
Do I have a conflict, Andre?
I would err on the side of question and say yes.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 34 is Request to Adopt Resolution Number 11-035 entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville, One, Approving the Application for Grant Funding from the Kaiser Permanente Community Benefits Grant Program, and Two, Approving the Acceptance of Said Grant Funds for Healthy Victorville's Prescription for Play Program."
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabrealis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 35 is Request to Approve Mayor Hoffman and McCann, P.C., as auditors for the City of Victorville and authorize staff to enter into a professional services agreement for auditing services for fiscal year 2010, 11, in the amount of $175,325.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild.
I'd like to hear Kennedy's explanation for this.
Be happy to. We sent out 30 RFPs. We received three in response. We rejected one. We interviewed two firms. Mayor Hoffman McCann was far and away the most qualified, the more qualified of the two, more qualified than any of the three that responded. Firm has a long history. It has, it audits 50 cities around the state of California, probably the most qualified municipal auditors in California. It was a pretty easy choice based on the interviews. Unfortunately, and I guess I can't resist the opportunity to comment on this, you saw an article in the Daily Press this morning where the author of the article made the statement that the State Controller's ongoing investigation had criticized the firm for not picking up on misappropriations. That was in the newspaper. Well, I have the State Controller's report with me. I've read it from cover to cover. Not sure anybody else in this room has. I've also read... I've also read the firm's response. State Controller had nine findings. After the firm responded, they modified two—actually modified three, they withdrew one. Of the nine findings that remained, none of them—not one—suggested that there was misappropriation. Nowhere in the State Auditor's report did the State Auditor claim that the firm did not pick up on or identify or detect misappropriation. We have a court case in the Los Angeles Court somewhere where a court will decide if there was misappropriation, whether there was any illegal act. That's going to be a court decision. State Controller doesn't make those kind of allegations. Far as I know, nobody—but the Daily Press makes those kind of statements. My first reaction was that this is a lie, because—but I realized it wasn't a lie because I doubt that anybody in the Daily Press's newsroom has read the State Controller's report. So for it to be a lie, they would have had to read it, know what it says, and misrepresent what it said. And I'm confident they didn't do that because I don't think anybody at the Daily Press has read the State Controller's report. I—I'm an auditor. I do this for a living. I understand what—the firm and all CPAs deal with as auditors. I think it's interesting that so many of the of the agencies in this area and throughout Southern California continue to use the Bell attorneys. If we're going to label a professional provider with that particular label, I would make the case that most of the problems at the Bell—the City of Bell were the result of some pretty poor, shabby legal advice, not poor audit work after the fact. So, sorry for the editorial comment, but this was not a difficult choice, clearly the most qualified firm. That enough an explanation? Want to hear more? Okay.
Well, you know, let's set aside public perception. How can I, as a councilmember, trust any of the figures that come out of this firm?
I'm going to quote your statement in a March or April meeting when the Audit Committee came back to the council and recommended that we go out for RFPs for audit services. Your response to me was, gee, I'm surprised. When these auditors came in and told us the truth about the City of Victorville, you want to change them. And I said, no, I don't want to change them. I only want to go out for RFPs, and I expect they will respond. Now, you made the observation that in their presentation to the council, they told the truth. So what is it that you object to?
Oh, what did it take for them to tell the truth? Bell?
What?
Bell? The Bell scandal? Is that what it took for the State Auditor Controller to investigate them?
They live by the same ethics that every CPA I know, and certainly every CPA in the audit business lives by. We tell the truth.
It's ridiculous to even consider them.
Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 36 is discussion and possible action with regard to direction given to the city manager by a single councilmember. Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, this was your item?
Yes, it was. And just so everybody's clear, because it's obvious again that the Daily Press has not done a very good job of identifying the issue that we're talking about. They wrote a headline that said the council is going to consider approving councilmembers' right to request information. Then they go on in the first paragraph and state what the issue really is, because it's not about a councilmember requesting information. It's about a councilmember giving direct orders and instruction to the city manager on his or her own authority to do things that the rest of the council has not agreed that person should do. It's—it's purely a question of who will give the city manager instructions. Now, as a matter of fact, for everybody's information, councilmember Vias's requests for information have probably been tenfold, meaning 10 times what any of the rest of us have requested, and she has received it. She has received reams of responses, okay? Now, this latest letter we got from her was seven items. I'll get my notes so I don't misspeak. It's seven items on. Item one, frankly, if the council had a chance to—to—to consider it and vote on it, I would vote absolutely no. We shouldn't do useless, meaningless projections on sales of real estate where we don't have a buyer and we're not a willing seller. Item two and six have been provided. Item three and four were mischaracterizations of what the auditor said, and the information she's asking for was included in the annual audit report. Item five is a judgment call that the entire council is going to have to make on a receivable item. And item seven, part of it we should do and part of it we should not do. There are some difficult calls in these seven items, and her letter instructed the city manager and the deputy and staff to stop what they're doing and go create these reports. Completely unacceptable. That's—that's my—my case, and we'll hear what everybody else thinks.
Well, that is—
I'll give the details if you want to hear all the details.
If I might, Mayor McCacken, I did, at the request of the council, prepare a legal analysis. You have that. It is a communication. It's privileged, but you have the opportunity, if you like, to waive that privilege. It's the council's privilege, and it can be shared publicly. But it basically refers to the city's municipal code that spells out specifically the requirement that it be a consensus of the council to direct the council member. Otherwise, you'd have a council—a city manager working for essentially five different masters, probably create Brown Act violation issues, would create confusion as to who he should follow. So there's a memo. I have no problem with it if the council so desires to—to waive the privilege.
What I find interesting is that when Rothschild sends out emails which violate the Brown Act to the entire council, requesting us to vote on certain items a certain way, requests staff to do things, nobody says anything. Or when Kennedy does it, or when Ryan McCacken writes letters to the First District Supervisor and to other elected officials without my approval, that's okay. But when I ask for pertinent information on encumbrances, on what property—what we owe on property, because when we have Ryan McCacken making statements to the press saying that we're going to sell off the golf club, when we're in debt in the golf club, there is no money to sell off. That tells me that the mayor is uninformed. And why? Because I'm not getting the information, nor is he. When I ask Doug Robertson, how much money is in the DIF fund? And he says 20 million. And then I find out from the Daily Press that there's actually 3 million in the DIF fund. I—I'm a little curious as to what's going on up here? Why aren't we getting the information when we have financial statements that are completely and utterly useless because they don't have cash flow balances, they don't have what we need to make good decisions? It's a problem. It's only a problem when I ask for it. But everyone else here can work outside the board and do whatever they want and make deals with Sandbag and do all sorts of things, but the minute I ask for information, it's a problem. All I have to say is this: This is America. And you know, I really don't care how this council votes on this subject because I'm going to continue to write letters, ask questions, and hold the city manager accountable, with or without this council's permission. So go ahead and proceed with your useless policies. I'm going to do what's expected.
And the issue is, does—the—the city manager work for Angela Vias? Or does she work for Jim Kennedy? Or Ryan McCacken? And the answer is no. He works for the city council. That is the only point of this discussion. Not all the objections that we've heard so many times about the information that apparently the rest of us gets, and she does not. All I know is that I have read through reams of paper of information that she has requested. So to make the claim that the city does not respond, or staff does not respond, is an absurd statement. But that's not the question. The question is, who does the city manager work for? And I think we need to resolve that and clarify it. And I'm—I've argued against waiving privilege. I've argued against it vehemently, but in this case, I'm prepared to waive privilege and have that memo written, or read, or discussed.
If—if I might, I do have two cards on this item. Marshall Kagan? Marshall's still here? No?
Kagan?
Marshall Kagan?
Speak. It's your turn. Hello. I'm a retired CPA who recently moved up to Victorville, and I was surprised when I found out that the city has lost a few hundred million dollars on bad deals in the last few years, and that now we taxpayers are going to have to pay that money and/or have poorer services. When you look at those things that happened, if there is anybody here who thinks that they were not the result of poor information, let him speak up. Okay. We have agreement that—the—we do not? Mr. Kennedy, tell me. It was not poor?
Poor, sir.
Okay. So our problem was poor information. Now, unless we're short of resources to get that information and any information—and you can't tell which information will be valuable, which is junk. You have to get them all. We have a city manager who since Mr. Ritso's withdrawal, shall we say, from Bell and the retirement of the Moreno Valley city manager, is now the highest-paid city manager in Southern California. If he and his finance department will come in and show us time sheets that shows they worked eight hours overtime each Saturday, then I will be willing to go along with the proposition that maybe we can't handle all these information requests. Mr. Cox, do we have any time sheets with eight-hour Saturdays?
Mr. Kagan, this is not the appropriate way to address the council.
Now, previous speakers have brought up the point that such a restriction of information may be illegal. And I think they'll be further checking if there is any need to find out. But let's state it here that the subject was brought up so that it's no surprise. Now, what I would suggest as a standard is that requests for the city manager, if he wishes them all funneled through him, should be on a one-week turnaround. If he provides a time sheet that shows he and his department have put in more than eight hours of overtime that week, then they get another week to do it.
Mr. Kagan, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, did you wish to speak on this item?
Why I came down this evening. I say this is why I came down here this evening, was to speak on this item. And I still don't know exactly what you're proposing because there's no written documentation either in the agenda or even the clerk showed me a—I don't know, some kind of a staff report. I still didn't really tell exactly what you're doing. But it seems to me, and I think most people will look at it this way, that what you're trying to do is silence this woman. You finally have somebody that you—you are going to question what this council does. And I'll give you an example. I've attended literally hundreds of board meetings over the years. Perhaps a half a dozen times, I've actually heard them debate an issue on the council where they didn't come in—or the board—ahead of time with the decisions made. I like to see dissension. I like to see votes 3-2 and 4-1 because it shows that you're listening to each other. If you all vote 5-0, 5-0, 5-0, 5-0, you're not listening to anybody. I think this is a bad idea from what little I've heard of it. If I'd seen the entire proposal, I might have some constructive comments, but nothing's available, so I only can go by what you've said. But please, folks, the idea is to get information and—and make wise decisions, and you can't do it by shutting people up. And I think the—the perception, if in my case, and I think for a lot of people, is you're just trying to shut one member up, and that's not right.
I have to say, if there's one thing we have been completely unable to do, it's to shut one single member up. That has not happened yet, and I wouldn't expect it's going to happen. I don't think anybody wants that to happen. This isn't about information. The information that's requested has been delivered, perhaps not on a one-week turnaround. We've been busy. Staff is busy. She gets what she asked for. That's not the issue. The issue is, shall one councilmember instruct staff on how to carry out their duties? And I say no.
I disagree. I do not get what I asked for. I get a lot of paragraphs on a paper that say a lot of nothing with no backup. That's not what I asked for. And it takes six weeks turnaround. By that time, we've had three meetings. It's useless information at that point.
All right, this item's before the council.
I'm not sure there's an action item. I think you just wanted to see what the city—what the municipal code says. The municipal code addresses directly your issue. Again, it's a memo. If you want to waive that, it's addressed in the memo.
There is no need for a motion because under the general law cities and the charter cities, we're operating under the same rules. They're all in the directions to the city. She cannot give direction to the city manager without consent of the council, majority of the council. That has been the policy since the inception of this city, and it'll be the policy going forward whether there's five new council members here or not. So there is no basic policy change, except I think that the city manager needs to be clear that one councilmember is not orchestrating his agenda and his time, completely consuming it. The nature of the here—Angela's asked for so much stuff, it's unbelievable. I have a volume about two inches thick of stuff she's asked for. Much of it is just very common knowledge information. It takes a lot of time to get—gather together in the form that she's asked for, and nothing has been denied from her. She's a new councilmember, and certainly everybody, new councilmembers would have questions. But when you demand that the city manager come in and—and turn around time and give a one-week notice or something like that, when we're up to our ears and alligators in a number of issues here, getting through our budget hearings and trying to balance them, getting through the audits and the legal issues that we've got. But the policy's clear. She—no one councilmember can dictate to the city manager. City manager works for five councilmembers, and three out of five will tell her what to do.
And remember that next time you direct him, and I don't want to see any letters coming out of McCacken unless I agree.
All right, so there's no motion on the table. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 37. This is discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild.
I have two items. I'm not sure—the first one is the BBNK letter response. Totally inadequate. I would ask—I don't know if we need to agendize it or if it's just a follow-up for another additional letter. They left off the one attorney that obviously we were asking about. The letter response, to me, was inadequate. So I would ask that the mayor redirect the letter back to BBNK with the appropriate attorney mentioned specifically so that we can get a clarification on that. Does that need to be agendized or not? I don't—I'm asking.
It'd have to be consensus to put that on the agenda to direct.
All right, then I ask for the council's consent to do a follow-up letter to BBNK, specifically with the attorney. I'm—I'm talking about Puro, so that—
Okay. Yes, that's—we'll put it on the next agenda.
That's—it'll be agenda. And then the other item that I'd like to have agenda— And then the other item that I'd like to have agendized is, I've put out a request, the mayor actually has put out a request to VITA, all members of VITA, all members of VITA, to have a full audit response to, back end to all of the member agencies, and that would be the city of Victorville, the city of Apple Valley, Hesperia, Atlanta, which is a new, actually a new member, and the county. And so far, we've got inadequate response, leaving Atlanta off for the moment because they're just relatively new. That's not their issue, but the rest of them need to come up and give us a full accounting of their expenditures or their VITA. We have done that completely, and they have not. And so now I'm asking that the council agendize to direct our VITA member to ask for an independent full audit of all members of the VITA, of the media organization. And we'll find out where the county has spent their money, where Hesperia has spent their money, where Apple Valley has spent their money. And Victorville's, we've spent 100% of our money in the project area, so that's not even a question. What have the other members, where have they spent their money? And they have not given us the proper response so far, as of last time I checked, which was this last week here. So I'd like to have that agendized as a council agenda item, too.
Mike, I'm sure all those cities have audits, do they not? Why don't we just ask them to submit an audit? Go online, get them, they're not difficult to get.
Not for VITA, I'm not, I don't think for VITA. That's a very unique niche in the audit structure. I mean, they're there, the answers are there, but the questions aren't structured in the way that we've produced ours.
I just think you're requesting something that, in the nature of the audits, they may not tell you the specific thing you're after. I'm just-
But you can't. I've tried, believe me, I've tried. Information and where the county is, where their revenue sources have come from and where they're spent in within the redevelopment agency of VITA, you're not going to find that information anywhere that I know of. Now, if I'm wrong-
If I understand, VITA receives tax increment and distributes the money to the RDAs. What we need, then, is to have each of those RDAs send over a copy of their audit report. I'll bet that's a simple request.
I'm not sure if the audit, I think the issue that Mike is getting to is whether or not the agencies are spending their money within their portions of the project area, and I'm not sure if that's reflected in an audit report or not.
Right.
So what's the pleasure of the council? Are we all? Okay.
Cool. That's it for me on that.
Mike, Councilmember Kennedy?
I don't understand what we're asking for, I guess, so.
Can't get the information that we're asking for. Keith Metzler wrote a pretty good memo-
Well, if three want to agendize it, we'll agendize it, we'll talk about it then.
Yeah, yeah. Did you have anything you'd like to agendize?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to agendize a staff report and a discussion on the Sterling agreements. One of Councilmember Vias's statements in her letter was demanding a report and encumbrances of the Sterling, that result from the Sterling agreements, and I'm pretty familiar with the concept of encumbrances, and I don't believe there's anything in those Sterling agreements that create encumbrances. There are, I'd like to know what they are, so I'd like to ask staff, Keith Metzler, if he would be, if we could agendize that, that issue.
Okay. Are we all okay with that? All right. Councilwoman Vias?
I don't know if this needs to be agendized or not, but I just need the budget a week in advance. I don't want to get it a Thursday before the meeting, and I have to go through the agenda plus the budget. I want adequate time to go through the budget.
Robertson, you want to address where we're at on that?
There's a meeting tomorrow night, joint meeting with the planning commission and the city council. You should have the budgets in your mailboxes tomorrow when you arrive for that meeting.
Okay.
The budget itself has been, or the item itself is going to be advertised for the June 21 council meeting, so that'll be two weeks ahead of that meeting, effectively.
Anything else?
You're going to agendize the ordinance, the noise ordinance?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's an item for the agenda, but there were people here tonight requesting
to form partnerships with the city of Victorville regarding the, you know, the recreation center or the sports center, I guess, at SCLA and then some of the other facilities here in the city. And I think we really need to look at that. It's, you know, we're going to go back to the way we all started in our communities, volunteering. And I think it's very important that we do keep an open mind to those requests and that we do whatever we can to facilitate those partnerships. If people are willing to step up to the plate and volunteer to maintain these facilities open, I think we need to listen to them and develop a partnership. I know there's liabilities for the city and so on, but I'm sure that our attorneys can formulate the documents to protect the city. So I would just, I don't know, we can agendize or have a report from our recreation department regarding that.
I would echo those comments. I know all of us up here have received numerous letters, emails, phone calls regarding keeping certain facilities open, especially Pebble Beach, and I know there's a desire to keep West Winds open as well. I know staff's working through some of those issues, but I think just the community coming out in force and in numbers, willing to volunteer, willing to pay more, willing to do whatever it takes to keep those recreational facilities open is quite phenomenal, and I applaud you all for doing that. And I sincerely hope that we can figure out a way to get it done. I think we owe it to you. Those are some of the only facilities in the entire High Desert where you can play racquetball, handball, and the such. So I appreciate all of you working with our city staff regarding-
Ryan, I think what we should agendize is some kind of a discussion, probably including the staff report, of how we could put some combination of fees and volunteers together to do the job. I mean, that I think we need to talk about.
I'm fine with that.
There might be reasons we can't do volunteers, or there might be insurance issues, but we need to get a full discussion of that.
Okay. I think that that was the nature of what you were trying to say. I think we'd all want to see that, so. We had one of our residents here last month, April Pinkston, talking about noise problems, and had a long conversation with her yesterday, I know Councilwoman Vias did as well. She has proposed that we consider a different noise ordinance within our city and has asked me specifically to look at the city of Hesperia's noise ordinance. I did ask our city clerk to obtain that and would ask that the council put that on a future agenda for our consideration. In essence, it makes the city the victim, not the complaining party, so that there's no retaliation back against a neighbor if they call in and complain about noise, and it allows the city to levy fines if the problem continues, is my understanding of the ordinance. I still have not seen it, but that's the way she's explained it to me. It seemed like a good idea, and I think it's something the council should at least consider, so I'd ask the council's consideration in putting that on our future agenda.
Ms. Mayor, I have an item I'd like to discuss if I could. In listening to the comments regarding information, it is very clear that there's really a misunderstanding on a lot of people's part in regard to public information. I'm sure that everyone is aware that the grand jury has requested hundreds of thousands of pages that has been provided. The Securities and Exchange Commission has requested hundreds of thousands of pages, it's all been provided. In the meantime, we have had, I think, carefully estimated in excess of 60 requests of public information per month. And we had three people who worked full-time for eight months, I believe, providing nothing but information. We've also had individuals to come to the counter, we've also had information from at least one speaker that came tonight to talk about it that got, I think it was about a six-inch-high stack of information. It takes sometimes a long time to get the information, but we provide the information. Yes, the public is entitled to the information, and in fact, we need to agendize that to, there's been no shortage of information. I don't know if anyone in the public has made a request for information and didn't get it. If they haven't gotten it, notify me, we'll get it because I think we've provided that. The other issue is, is just an understanding of what it means to get public information. You know, we can set individuals down in a room and say, here's the file, go through it. What we try to do is to answer the question, discuss it with the individual, find out exactly what they do want and provide that information. And we would expect them to come back, and we try to say, we believe this is all of the information. If it's not, let us know, and we'll try to answer the question. But I think it's generally known that there's two investigations that are very in-depth going on, and suddenly other people decide they want to do their independent investigation. Still, there comes a point when you just can't provide that information, other than just say, what information do you want? Here's the file, go through it yourself. We try not to do that. We try to be more helpful than that. There is a time constraint that I think the public expects to get the information, and we try to get it to them. I noticed tonight, Ms. Vias said that there's information she hasn't gotten. Actually, today I was going through all the memorandums, I think I have six from her requesting information, and I believe I have two items that haven't been answered. One tonight is going to be put on the agenda, thank you for that, because there has been a lot of discussion regarding the Sterling agreement, what does it mean? And recently, we were criticized because the council should review that, but I think everybody's forgotten, less than a year ago, I believe, that whole thing was renegotiated. I believe it was about a year ago, and that was renegotiated. But then, on the other hand, there was an election in November, and Councilman Kennedy and Councilman Vias is not aware of that item was renegotiated. City council had potential litigation, discussed it, put it on the agenda, and actually adopted a brand-new agreement. And so that all needs to be brought back, even though less than a year ago, city council went through extensive discussions on that item. If there are items that are still lingering out there in regard to questions about the cities in financial trouble, I keep having people address me and say, why did I let it happen? And I keep reminding them, I wasn't here. They don't believe it for some reason because other people said, oh, yes, you were. I wasn't here. We're doing our best to get out of this financial dilemma. We've made tremendous kind of gains, and I suppose it's time to put on the agenda the gains that we have made, the contracts that we have canceled, the savings that have incurred. And one of the most things that bothered me more is the 200 employees we've had to cut our workforce as a result of those financial problems. But I guess we need to review this every so often to refresh people on what actually occurred, because as I sat and listened to the speakers, it's very clear that they have missed a major portion of the truth. And I guess that maybe every quarterly, we need to revise those items, put on the agenda so the council will know. It's kind of painful to have individuals stand before the council and say, well, why don't you start by cutting the public employees? When we have over 200 less employees today than when I went to work. They also say, why don't you cut the salaries? We cut the salary of virtually every employee. We terminated six department heads. They talk about cutting benefits. We cut benefits for all the employees, but apparently somehow that doesn't get advertised, and the people don't know it. And I hate to bring it up because it's painful, it's embarrassing for the employees, and it's been painful going through this whole process. So if there is information in regard to that, that's public information, call the city hall, ask for my office, we'll provide you a copy, because apparently there's not a belief that we've done these things. But in fact, it's ongoing, has been ongoing, will continue to be ongoing until we get on our feet. And I'd love to get that information out because people keep coming to the microphone and making statements. Apparently, they're not aware that we've done these things. I think it's important that they do understand that we've done these things. It's been very difficult because if we're going to succeed as a city, we have to move ahead, we have to cooperate, we have to work together. And one of the bright, bright, bright spots tonight is that people are, come before the council and request a partnership to work with the city, because whether you like it or not, we're in this together. And if we don't succeed, you don't succeed, and vice versa. I think we all want to succeed. So I'd like to agendize some of these items. It's painful to relive it, but for some reason, a large number of the public is missing out on what has already occurred.
You know, there's a critical piece of financial information that people need to know, and they need to understand. We listen to all this comments about mismanagement, but in 2005, the general fund revenues in this city were $62 million. In 2010, they were $45 million. Now, we have no control over revenues. When we lose 30% of our revenues as a result of sales tax and property tax that we have no control over, the only thing we can control is how we spend money. That's it. That's it. If anybody's got a good idea for how to get those property taxes back up and those sales taxes back up, we've got to get through this. We've got to get through it. And we're not by ourselves, it's every city out there. People need to know that. There was no council decisions that caused the property tax and sales taxes to fall the way they have. So some decisions that were made when property taxes and sales tax revenues were so healthy now look like bad financial decisions. But all they were, decisions were made given the information they had at the time, and nobody in 2005 could have predicted where we'd be today. Nobody. Nobody in this room, that's for sure. Important information.
All right, we'll move on to reports from council members. Councilwoman Vias?
Just that I'm going to reiterate that, you know, I'm going to continue to ask the city manager questions with or without your permission until I get the information I need, and if I don't get it, I'll take it up with a higher authority.
Ellen? Mike?
First one is at complimentthehighdesertdaily.com. It's Miguel Gonzalez's website, a lot of positive news there. He beat the Daily Press out again. Good positive news, you ought to check into that thing on a daily basis. He broke the Red Bull story, which, you know, had been behind the scenes, but it came out first there, so I compliment Miguel and his highdesertdaily.com. Another positive news that came out, but it kind of was shined off on a little bit, is the long work that we've done out there at SCLA for FedEx and the AP School, Air Frames and Power Plant School that's out there. Jim Wersham personally had a hand in both of those. FedEx probably wouldn't have known where Victorville was had it not been for Jim Wersham and his relationship to Mr. Smith, the president and CEO of FedEx. So that's positive stuff that's going on that's taken years to develop, and here it is today, coming to that. So the things that happened, the Red Bull story, that, all those are coming off of a platform that has been built and established out at SCLA as being one of the most incredible spots in all of Southern California. And I keep saying, in spite of California, good news is coming out of that, and we'll continue as best we can. We still, we can't fight Sacramento very well, but if they ever get their head back in the game, the very first spot that will benefit out here in the High Desert region where we have our own air quality district, where we have an incredible job generator in the form of former Georgia Air Force Base, under the control of five council members here. All of those things have been handled well and judiciously, in spite of all the squabbling that might go on from time to time in the memberships here. The fact is that that is an incredible resource out there and will continue to be. It is just beginning to grow. Victor Valley is 400,000 people. I've been here over 40 years. My prediction is that the Victor Valley in the next 15 years will hit a million, a million. So that's where we're at. And then when you couple us with the Palmdale-Lancast area, another growth area over there, will probably be the hottest growth there in the whole Southern California region in the High Desert out here. So I think from my standpoint of quality of life, this is one of the better places to live in all of Southern California. I was born in Los Angeles, so I'm a native Californian, so, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy?
We had one of our citizens tonight comment on bankruptcy, and it happens to be the second time that I've heard that particular individual bring this issue up, that the city ought to file bankruptcy. Let me give you some real simple overview kind of facts. The city, when you put everything together, has $1.2 billion in assets. We have about just under $500 million in debt. Now, most of those assets and- Most of those assets and almost all of that debt relate to the development at George Air Base. That debt is not a general liability of the city. With $1.2 billion in assets and $500 million in debt, that gives us net assets or net worth of almost $700 million. There's not a bankruptcy court in the country that would consider our bankruptcy application. And there is not a competent, knowledgeable bankruptcy attorney that would take that case to a bankruptcy court. So bankruptcy is not a solution because debts in excess of assets is not our problem. Our problem is cash flow and it's general fund cash flow. We've made some tremendous progress at the base. Airport turned a profit this last year. It will in coming years. It's, our problem is in the general fund, and it's the shortage of revenues and doing what we can to get expenses under control, not, they're under control, my gosh, it just means continuing to cut them so that we can keep our expenses in line with our revenues. That's, the problem is just really about that simple. That is our cash problem. It's a general fund problem. We need to address it. Bankruptcy's not an option.
All right, thank you. And before we adjourn the meeting to our joint meeting with the planning commission tomorrow at 5:00 PM right here in the council chambers, just would like to welcome our new chief of police, Captain Yoder, who will be starting next week, I believe. So look forward to working with you and helping keep crime down in the streets of the city of Victorville. So with that, we are adjourned.